Thank you all. We really appreciate this opportunity to talk about life cycle analysis and really appreciate the support of the Forest Climate Working Group. And the group's efforts both to improve the dialogue, learn from each other, and try to expand people's knowledge of the life cycle analysis system that we're trying to implement through the forest sector. Today, we've got two really outstanding speakers. If someone, I think someone might not be on mute. If we could have everyone mute their systems, that'd be great. But today, we have really two outstanding speakers that are real experts in this field. Couldn't be happier with the ability to present Jennifer O'Connor and Edie Sonny Hall. They are really world leaders in understanding LCA and sustainability issues. And so therefore, I'm going to keep my comments mercifully brief as they are the true experts here. But I think it's really interesting that we're looking at these questions because if you look at some of the speculative investments that are being made by companies in systems like mass timber or in carbon markets. And you know, companies that are huge like Amazon, Facebook, Google, Microsoft, those are, you know, the top four companies in the S and P 500 are making trillions or trillion dollar companies that are making real commitments to do something about greenhouse gases and trying to reduce climate impacts from their own companies. And really tried to make a difference in the worldwide economy and trying to change systems and make sure that we're doing better for climate policy. So even though these actions are voluntary right now, perhaps because they are voluntary, verifiable carbon solutions that have a real credible backstory are incredibly important, which really comes to what LCA does for us in this, in this space. Investors want these companies to make these investments. Customers want them to make these investments. But what's really interesting to me is that in addition to all of that, these companies are making the kinds of investments to reduce their climate impacts for the next generation. If you actually talk to them, they'll tell you that they're making these decisions for their kids. They want to be able to truly put the planet in better shape. And they actually recognize that they have the buying, buying power to make it happen. And so they're looking to our sector and now it's our chance to shine through performance. And so, you know, with the change administrations that we've got, it really puts climate policy front and center with a goal of reducing emissions. Enough to keep us under two to one and a half degrees of warming overall. But when it comes to the built environment, this is particularly important because buildings account for 39% of global emissions, 28% from building operations and 11% from embodied carbon in materials and construction. And wood products are a renewable resource, of course, that generally take less energy to manufacture than a lot of the alternative building materials. And what companies and legislatures and others are hungry for are solutions that address climate change that are based on science and credible data, which we'll talk about today. If we can provide a credible current backstory through the science and data, we are going to thrive in these new markets and be recognized as really the most relevant and proximate tool to address climate change. And that's why interesting, this interest in life cycle analysis, whole building LCA, environmental product declaration development, and other tools to tell the carbon story of forest products makes so much sense. And the forest, the forest carbon working groups leadership in this area is just incredibly valuable because it shows that a broad range of stakeholders want to get the data right so that we can tell the story and ultimately do the right thing for the planet. I just wanted to tell you, you know, it's sort of interesting to me because one of the first policy success stories I ever had in Washington was about securing additional funding for the Forest Inventory Analysis Program. A program that Forest Climate Working Group has really been invested in and has really made a major difference to increase the value and support and funding for it. And it's interesting because I would often go into visit decision makers offices and with colleagues from organizations that didn't always agree with the policy solutions that I had identified. But when we came in and we jointly advocated for more funding for the FIA program, we'd often say that, you know, we're going to argue over the policy solutions. But we didn't want to argue about the data. We wanted to have a basic understanding of what that data was. And these LCA tools offer that same opportunity. If building materials and whole buildings are being analyzed with the same LCA frameworks, we can make better policy decisions that are informed by the same authoritative data. And it's not about singling out one material over another. If we get the data right so that we can make better policy choices, we can reduce that embodied carbon in the built environment. And so now I'd like to introduce Jennifer O'Connor of the Athena Institute, who is, as I mentioned, a worldwide leader on LCA, embodied carbon, and what we can do to reduce the CO2 emissions in the built environment. Jennifer.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, Michael. I wasn't sure when you wanted me to show which of your slides, so I was just choosing for you. I hope that was okay. All right. Well, hi, everyone, and thank you for being here and thanks for the opportunity to, to chat with you all in a little lecture that we'll do here on embodied carbon. So, so Michael made, made the case for reducing embodied carbon. And so the question is, how do we go about doing that and what might be policy options to do that? So I'm going to run through a lecture here. I've got about half an hour, I think, and then I'll be passing over to Edie. So, so settle in. I hope you have a cup of coffee. I'm going to try not be incredibly boring, but, but bear with me as I try and walk a fine line between being technical but being understandable. Okay, so just a quick word about where I'm coming from. If you haven't heard of the Athena Institute, we are based in Canada, though we have an outfit, a partner in the US. We're a nonprofit research group in life cycle assessment. And we have a kind of an interesting mandate, and that's to advance the application of LCA for a more sustainable built environment. What do we do? We do life cycle assessment and environmental product declaration, LCA and EPD services for construction products. We do quite a lot of public service, so those are the next two bullets on here. We provide free software tools so the design community can do LCA on building projects and pavement projects. And we do a lot of advocacy and research and outreach and events like this. Okay, I should, I should say that we're, Edie and Michael are going to monitor the chat box. If you have questions as we go, perhaps best to pop them in there. If it's a question that we think should be addressed right away, we'll, we'll pop in during the lecture and do that. Otherwise, we'll, we'll address them at the end. Okay, here's, here's what I'm going to cover today. I'm going to start with a little LCA 101. And in that, we'll do a primer on, on the terminology and the concepts. And then I want to talk about technical and policy aspects of reducing embodied carbon. So apologies if this is too simple of a presentation for some of you. I'm, but I'm, I'm hoping that, that it works and this is, I'm aiming this as a plain language introductory level lecture. And we're going to start with some terminology. So we're talking about this expression embodied carbon. And this is, it's, it's, it's an imprecise shorthand expression. So let's just, let's break it down a little bit in this slide. So we're saying carbon here when we mean carbon dioxide equivalent. And what that means is greenhouse gas emissions, GHGs. The word embodied here is simply to distinguish this kind of, this package of GHG emissions from those that come from operating a building. What this really is, it's what we call GWP or global warming potential. That's one of the results that come out of a life cycle assessment. This also could be called scope three GHG emissions. Also, sometimes we call those value chain or upstream, downstream, or other indirect emissions. And they'll talk about all that in the next couple of slides if, if this isn't quite resonating yet. What I want to emphasize, second to last line here, this does not mean the carbon contained in something. So not embedded or stored or sequestered carbon. It does not mean that. And embodied carbon may or may not reflect the full life cycle. Okay, we're going to do all of this a bit more on my next slides. All right, when we talk about carbon footprint for a building, there are a number of different terms that we might use to do that. And it can be confusing because we're not all using the same language here. So I've tried to lay out some of that on the, on this slide here. So, so first we have the scope one, two, three lingo. That's the language from the world of greenhouse gas accounting. The other text is, is the language we might see elsewhere. The text that's in the light blue is how the, the, the building community thinks about these things. So let's start with scope one, which are direct greenhouse gas emissions. Those are emissions that are controlled by the owner of the asset. And the example in a building is, is I'm combusting some fossil fuel, perhaps a natural gas to run a boiler to heat my building. The, the, the buildings world would call those site emissions. Then we go to scope two. Those are very specifically indirect GHG emissions related to, to generating energy off site. So it's an asset not controlled. It's a, it's a, it's an emission not controlled by the owner of the asset. The example there is in bringing a fossil fuel at the utility to generate energy that's used in the building. In the sustainable buildings world, they call those source emissions. And then we have scope three, and that's everything else that's indirect. So an example there is as a manufacturing facility combusting fossil fuel to make a construction material and transport that to the building site. And that's what we're calling embodied carbon. All right. So here I'm trying to capture that idea of embodied carbon in a, in a visual. So, so the slide here, it's the timeline for a building. So cradle to grave from extracting raw materials through to product manufacturing, transporting to the site, constructing a long use phase of the building. And then end of life demolishing the building, hauling away the waste and onto landfill where processes happen there. And at every stage of the life cycle, there are inputs of resources, materials, energy, water, and there are outputs, waste or emissions. So the, the greenhouse gas component of those emissions for everything other than operating that building, that's embodied carbon. Okay, next slide. So, so let's, we'll do a little LCA 101 now. We're going to start with this definition. As I said before, this is going to be a very basic intro, not too technical. And I want to start with this definition, which is the sort of the, the official definition. This is put together from the, the international standards definition. So LCA is a technique for assessing the environmental aspects and potential impacts associated with a product or service by compiling an inventory of inputs and outputs of the product system. Then we evaluate the potential environmental impacts associated with the inputs and outputs. And then we interpret the results of all of that. Let's put that in perspective of a picture because sometimes I just find that so helpful. So here's another illustration of the concept of the life cycle of a product from cradle to gate to grave. And I want to point out that gate point. Because many, many environmental product declarations, in other words, many, many LCA results for products will stop at the product gate. So that's the point in time when the product leaves the factory. And they'll stop there because there may be uncertainty about what's going to happen to that product once it leaves the gate. We may not know yet what its use will be. So we'll stop at the gate and we'll let another LCA study take it from gate, gate to grave. The diagram is showing the inputs of resources and the outputs of waste and emissions. So what this picture is really capturing is that, that inventory step. When we inventory the flows in and out of the system over the, over the life. That there are four basic steps to LCA, and those are captured in the text on the left-hand side. So these are the standard four steps. We begin every study by wanting to identify, why am I doing this study? So we're going to identify the goal of the study and we want to identify what's going to be included in that study, and that's the scope. Step two, we do that inventory, which is captured in this picture on the slide. Then we go through a process where we say, okay, we've inventoried this. What does that mean? What is the, the potential impact on the environment due to those flows? And then we'll have this interpretation step where we try and make sense of our results. We might do something like a sensitivity analysis because there are so many assumptions involved in this. We might want to test, what happens if my assumption is, is something else? Just as an example of what happens in the inventory step. When we finish that, we're going to end up with a, a set of, of impact assessment and resource consumption results. I'm showing you on the screen the most common ones that are measured and reported, but we actually measure many more, around 25 or so important environmental metrics having to do with the environment and some of them with, with health. So, so those are the kinds of results that we're going to end up with. So in the inventory step, for example, I may have accounted for all of the fossil fuel coming into the system. Well, what's the effect of that on, on climate change? What's the effect of that on, on acid rain, on creation of smog and so forth? So that's this, that's the step. The, the one we talk about the most these days is global warming potential or GWP. And that's what we're measuring when we're getting at embodied carbon. All right, I, I want to do a couple of slides here to, to talk about why we would do LCA. What's the, what's the, what's the business case for it? And, and what are the benefits of it? Because LCA is supposed to help us make the best decisions for, for the environment. And it's really the best tool for the job for a number of reasons. And I've tried to put those on the, the slide here. I think these are the top four reasons. The first, still, when we're trying to make a choice based on concerns for the environment, we, we do tend to still, even today, operate with a lot of guesswork or assumptions or conventional wisdom. LCA is, is replacing that with data. Next up, it's keeping us focused on the major sources of impact. So because we're actually doing measurement, we'll, we'll know what are the big ticket items here? So we don't get distracted by, by something that, that's really sort of too small to, to matter. Third, it's, it's, it's preventing tunnel vision. And, and what I mean by that is, is we're going to see the whole picture instead of just, just focusing on a single issue or a single characteristic. An advantage of that would be when we're only thinking about transportation distance. So you know, when we're, we're focusing on local products or we're only caring about recycled content. I think the, you know, the bans on plastic, single-use plastic bags, that's, you know, that's a single issue topic there. That's just focusing on waste management. When we bring LCA into the consideration, we're, we're, we're going to look at the whole picture. And, and that ties into the fourth one on the list here. It prevents burden shifting. And, and what that means is when we just look at, at one part of the picture, one aspect of a product or one part of the life cycle, what we may be doing is reducing impacts in that one narrow bit. But we might just have shifted a burden from, from, for example, one life phase to another. And, and that's really quite, quite important to not do because then, you know, what, what was the point? So all of those benefits are, you know, they're terrific, but the business world isn't going to necessarily do it just out of the goodness of their, you know, their hearts. There, there needs to be some, some incentive. And, and on this slide are some of the reasons that motivate industry to LCA, to do LCA. So, so well, first one, the first one is, is perhaps a little bit publicly motivated. Some manufacturers just want to be sure that when they make changes for a sustainability purpose, that, that they've actually done something that, that's optimal. But then the next two really are more about market drivers. So the idea that there might be market recognition for, for quote unquote, the good guys. Or there might be some very specific market drivers. For example, there's an incentive in the lead green building program that's, that's trying to get design teams to choose products that have an environmental product declaration. There are some emerging buy clean policies. I think Edie might touch on that. Can I get folks to mute? I'm getting lots of noise from some. And then there's the issue of risk avoidance. Are there, are there environmental regulations potentially coming down the pipe? Are there carbon taxes coming? Do you, do you want to be prepared to, to avoid some of those risks? I have some examples on the screen that I think are sort of fun. Up there in the upper right, we've got Coca-Cola. That, that's the, that's sort of the origin story often in industries use of LCA back in 1969. Wanted to, to compare different beverage containers. And then three of my favorite examples on the bottom. So we have Procter &amp; Gamble with cold water tied. They came out with that product because they did an LCA. They wanted to figure out where in the life cycle is, is our impact. And it's, it's in the, the, the creation of hot water in the home. So they said, well, let's, let's make a cold water formulation. The one in the middle, North Face's jacket, they were looking at using recycled polyester. They were looking at a, at a new dyeing process to save water. They used LCA to make sure that those choices actually, actually delivered real results. The, the last one is Levi's. Similar Procter &amp; Gamble, they wanted to see where in their product's life cycle is the bulk of the impact. It, it's in the washing and drying of the product. So they have a tag in there that says a number of things, including wash me less often and, and line dry me. Okay. How we doing here? Okay, we're good. So the steps to do LCA for a product, I've listed them on the, the screen and I'll read through. I'll just, I'm just going to tell you here, I'm using brown on the text, which are the points in the process where there can be a huge amount of variation in LCA from one study to another. And I want to mention that because there's really an important point in this, and that has to do with, with inconsistency and variability of results. This is a big issue when we're starting to talk about policies. So I'm going to lay the seat here and we'll probably pick this up as we go. So two different studies, as I say, can have extremely different results even for the same product. Now, that's not necessarily a problem. It only becomes an issue when we want to compare products or when we want to roll up LCA results from different products into an LCA for a whole building. So we're going to talk more about that comparative, comparability problem as we go. But first, let me just run through these steps. All right, first I mentioned step one for any LCA is, is why am I doing the study and what am I going to include? So goal and scope of the study. Then, excuse me, we'll survey the plant for the product or perhaps a sample of plants. If they have multiple facilities and we're going to account for everything going in and coming out. So that's called primary data when we gather that data. Then we're going to get our background or secondary data. So upstream materials that might be feeding into that product or the, the energy being used in the facility. We typically wouldn't do that LCA work ourselves. That data would already exist. Then we're going to run that through impact assessment software. Then we have our interpretation step. We're going to write up the results, then some optional stuff. We might give third-party review, especially if we're going to next bullet, make that report public. Then we might have done an LCA because we wanted to publish an environmental product declaration. And EPD is simply a summary of an LCA report, so we might want to be doing that. Ideally, we want to make that data available to whole building LCA tools or a public life cycle inventory or an EPD database. But ideally, the last bullet, the, the reason, really the pure reason to do LCA is, is we wanted to study the product to find our hotspots and find ways to reduce impacts. Typically for a product, it's going to be cradle to gate. That will be most common, as I mentioned before, because we may not be sure what's happening to that product when it leaves the factory gate. And we might be doing this LCA as an industry average. So a softwood lumber EPD versus an EPD for a particular sawmill. Or I might be doing a brand name EPD. We might be picking up that, on that a little bit as we go here particularly with Edie. Alrighty. Let's, now, we've talked about doing LCA for a product and why product manufacturers might want to do LCA. I want to move now into LCA for a whole building. So when we do LCA for a building, we're going to start by taking our product LCA information. So that's the gray box on the slide. And then we're going to add everything else that we need to finish off the building's life cycle. So I'm going to start by adding, I'm going to kind of work down in columns here. Going to start by adding the LCA resorts to, LCA results to transport products to my building site. I then need to add in the information about my process of construction. Then I'm moving to the use phase, so that'll be the green column there. So then, over the life of the building, I will be maintaining and replacing products, so I need to add that in. Then the faded out green, I, I optionally can add in my building consumption of energy and water, say to heat and ventilate the building. If I want to, I can add that in. Then the blue boxes are end of life, so I need to account for building demolition. I account for transporting that demolition waste away from the, the site. And then I'm going to have a whole bunch of, of waste management issues. And then we have all the way to the far right faded out because it's optional. Sometimes in LCA, we look at things that happen beyond building life. And that's where we sort of take, take credit for recyclability, for example, or maybe future energy capture of wood waste from the building. We're not going to talk about that today. Gets a little bit complicated. You might notice the bottom of the screen. I have some nomenclature, A1 to A5, so forth. Going to talk about that on the next slide, so park that for now. That has to do with how we catalog life cycle phases. Okay, so there are a number of issues at, at play here. One is consistency. So if I want to add all this stuff up, it's got to be compatible and comparable. That, that is tricky. Another is availability of all these data points. There are a lot of gaps and we often have to find workarounds. And then there's the challenge of forecasting. And this is a case always for LCA, but particularly for a long-lived product like a building. I'm going to be looking into the future. And so I've got to make a lot of assumptions and that can be quite tricky. All right. Okay, so let's talk about life cycle stages for a building. I'm introducing you to this nomenclature because this is how we talk about it in LCA. This is the language that we use to characterize the cradle to gate and beyond life cycle stages for a building. And, and I want to do this because you will encounter this lingo as you go down this, this path. And I'm also emphasizing the importance of the entire life cycle when making decisions about what products are best or about what, what building designs are best. So we have our, our A1 to A3, we call that the product stage. So that's cradle to gate. Then A4, A5, we call it the construction process stage, so transporting from gate to site and then building the building. Then we have our use stage. That, that'll be the longest stage, you know, 20 to, you know, 200 years long of, of building occupation. Just to give you one example of, of why we need to look at that, it can't just stop at A1 to A3 on a product. I might have a product that's got really low impacts in manufacturing, but it's got a really short lifespan, needs to be replaced a lot. And so that would be box B4. So over the life of the building, I may replace that product a dozen times. And I need to account for that if I'm choosing between two products. Then we have our end of life stage. So our deconstruction transportation to waste or recycling facility and so forth. I'm showing this because and I'm I'm really emphasizing lifecycle because I'm a little bit concerned about some recent policy moves that stop at A3. And I do think there's a a big risk of unintended consequences. That the the rationale for stopping there is that the bulk of of impacts happen there. And so, you know, I I guess it's logical to say, well, if most of it's there, let's look there. My concern comes down to when we're doing comparisons or doing whole building LCA. And while the bulk may be there, we may tip the scale from one decision to another based on the information in these other lifecycle phases. All right onward, let's do some just do a nice picture. So, okay, so to to recap the fundamental principles here to to apply LCA to whole building design. A building is a, it's just a product, but it's a big, complicated and long-lived assembled product. For whole building LCA, we add up all the construction product LCA results and then add in the gate to grave portion and big design decisions need the holistic perspective of whole building LCA. Now, I'm showing an example of a building I I quite like to talk about. It's a it's a office tower in Houston. The structural engineer on that is very active with LCA. He uses it a lot on his projects. And he used it to find out that his biggest hotspot was concrete. That told him that if he wanted to to really get bang for the buck on taking action to reduce embodied carbon, he would look deeply at his concrete and he worked with suppliers to customize the mixes of concrete on there because you can get a lot of savings just by how you how you put together the components that go into into concrete. And he got pretty significant savings on that building for doing that. All right, so how does this work in software? In theory, the this diagram is showing you how how software tools should work. So that's all of that is super complicated and hard to do and too much to ask of an architect or engineer because this requires LCA expertise to actually do that. And that's why there are simplified software tools to to help to help make that work. So the primary part of doing that, the primary input for a whole building LCA is the quantities and the types of materials used in the the building. So we start with that with that that blue box. There are different ways to get that information. We won't go in into that today and you'd want to take account for construction waste and all of that, not just what's in the building. Then when you have that, then we'll go down again, that my format from last time down in the column. I'm going to tap into background data on the materials and the energy used. And I'm going to do an LCA. Or optionally, the darker gray at the very bottom, I might skip that part and try and shortcut it and use EPDs for that, which at the moment can be problematic for harmonization and regionalization issues. Then moving across the slide to the right, I I in our software, we asked you for building location and building type and size and so forth. And that informs the assumptions that we're going to make in the background about what we call scenarios, but the assumptions about the future. And that allows us to take that data and regionalize it. So it's regionally specific. And then we're going to add in all of that, that that stuff about the rest of the life cycle. So we make our assumptions. Or by the way, these can be user inputs. What are the transportation distances and modes for those construction materials? How often are products replaced and so forth? Okay, so I better move on. I'm now starting to get a little worried about my time. Okay. So there are software tools for this, like I mentioned. We have ours, which is a free tool, the Impact Estimator for buildings, and that is a standalone desktop software tool. Another tool that works like we do is in terms of method in the background is Tally. Tally is a commercial tool. It's not a standalone. It only works within a an architectural drawing package called Revit. I'm going to mention the third one here, although I do not have confidence in it because it works differently. And that's called one click LCA. Regardless, all of you know, all of these tools are fine and they're getting used, but they're not comparable with each other due to some of the inconsistencies and harmonization issues that I mentioned before. All right. Okay, so let's 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 move into reducing embodied carbon and some of the technical and policy issues around that. So so the purpose of LCA is to measure impacts so that we can presumably seek ways to reduce those impacts. So how do we reduce impacts for buildings? And what kinds of policy could can move? So I want to talk about all of that in my next batch of slides. Okay, so if we if we want our buildings to have lower embodied carbon, I think about tackling this from two sides, from the supply side and from the from the the demand side. So the supply side is saying, well, let's tackle it at the level of products and and of of energy. So we'll put the burden on industry. We'll make greener products and and fuels. The demand side is saying, okay, well, that's, you know, that's fine. But but we also have a responsibility at the consumption side to consume less and consume smarter. So that's where we're putting the responsibility on building designers and in building owners. Let me give you some examples of of what I think of as demand side or or design tactics. So that's that's where we look at, can we be more efficient with the structure? So we'll use less materials. Can we be efficient in the use of cement in concrete? We get a lot of benefit there by by reducing the amount of cement. This is where we do things like material substitution, one material substituted for another and reducing carbon footprint. This is where we look at durable and low maintenance materials so that we keep materials in service longer and they take less to less effort to maintain adaptable and deconstructible design. That's again about keeping materials and buildings in service longer. Reducing floor to floor height. When we do that, we're we're going to say materials on the exterior cladding. And then the ultimate question in order to reduce consumption is to build smaller or perhaps build not at all. Okay. We'll talk about policy now. And in the buildings world, in, for example, in building codes, we often think in terms of prescriptive versus performance-based requirements. A prescriptive policy is is just telling us what to do. So we're following a prescription for an action that is deemed to be good, to be good in in all applications. Performance-based policy don't necessarily tell us what to do. They tell us to aim. They have an objective. They tell us to aim for a certain certain a certain performance. So for example, in this case, this would say, choose a product that's that's shown itself to be low carbon because they've done an LCA and and published results. So that's performance at the material level. Or we can do that at the level of the whole building and that and that would be something like give me a building that you've used LCA to show that you have achieved exemplary whole building performance. So let me just give a give a few examples. So an example of 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 a prescriptive policy for embodied carbon are are things that we have seen many times before. We've seen them for a long time. And in a number of programs and policy have had these things in place. And that would be giving an incentive to use recycled products or local products or bamboo or or green roofs. Or I would put any use wood policies on this list. Showing an example of a of a of a website that that operates with this sort of philosophy. The issue here is that this is very subjective. It's not evidence-based. And I think there's a very high risk of unintended consequences when you use this kind of policy. You can't be sure if the if results are actually actually delivered. You may have scale problems. And by that, I mean, you're going to focus on tiny parts of the building, perhaps. High chance of burden shifting here. I think your risk making winners and losers in industry, and I don't think that's helpful. We want all industries to participate in looking at ways to reduce impacts. And my big concern is that you 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 set up this idea that there might be silver bullets. And so you remove all incentives to look for other savings elsewhere in the in the value chain. So I I think it's risky. Potentially usable within a narrow product category, but but challenging. Okay, so let's talk about in my last, I'm going to aim, Edie, I'm going to aim to wrap up in five. So I think we're okay. Let's talk about the performance-based approach to policy and first talk about, can you do this at the level of just the materials? So the idea here is that you'll 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 choose a best-in-class product. And for an example, for example, you might look at a specific lumber supplier that has an embodied carbon lower than an industry benchmark. This approach to policy is in a couple of places. It's it's in it's in the lead program within their credit to use EPDs. You get another credit if you show your best in class. It's also a component of the California Buy Clean Policy, or at least in the future additions of those. This will require widespread use of LCA and EPDs in industry, which is problematic because it's expensive. And it's going to require some sort of method for figuring out what's that benchmark? What's a fair benchmark and a bunch of other questions like, well, what about imported products? Are they going to be required to participate and so forth? So on the right hand side, I've got my list of all the things that 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 make this a little bit problematic. But, you know, feasible but problematic. So we need a lot more consistency in EPDs. You're really not supposed to use EPDs for this purpose. You're supposed to only compare them within a whole building context according to ISO standards. Might work within very narrow product categories, though. Might motivate industry to improve. I'm not sure, though, my bottom item there that you're really going to do much to reduce embodied carbon in buildings because you're really just, you're you're picking at the corners. And you're you're really not tackling the goal, which is to get a lower carbon buildings, not necessarily an incentive for lower carbon products. Okay. So I, you know, I'm personally a fan of of LCA-based policy at the level of the whole building. And there are a couple of ways you could take a run at that. You could you could do a very simple baby step and that's simple disclosure. So so just get the design community to do LCA and and just and report it. Another way to go is is to kind of in the category of carbon tax, you would you'd put some sort of fee for every unit of embodied carbon in new construction. And then we have the third category are the performance target approach. So come in below a benchmark allowance. Did I? Oh, yeah. Okay. So come in below a benchmark or come in below some kind of fixed cap. So let's talk about those. Okay, so simple disclosure. I'm giving you an example of a building that 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 wanted to get a certification in it in an embodied carbon voluntary program. So they had to do LCA, report their embodied carbon. And I've listed programs and policy that have some form of this. And this is easy to understand. It's simple to implement. It's achievable with current resources. And it is a baby step to help ramp up. It's a gives you time to build up skills. Next up is this idea of a carbon fee. So this is acknowledging that every building has has embodied carbon and and given you an incentive, financial incentive to reduce it. This is used in a couple of green building programs. Here's an example of a building that would have had to to do that. They did it by buying an offset. I think an interesting approach to this would be to actually have a have a carbon trading program where the fee would go towards a pool of money to provide an incentive to rehabilitate and upgrade existing buildings. But anyway, that's just my my personal my personal opinion. Then there's the idea of a fixed cap. So you perform LCA and you've got a fixed amount of of carbon per square foot of floor area that you have to come in below. That's really difficult to implement in a reliable and meaningful way. In my opinion, it is not at all feasible at the moment. Yet it is currently used in a few programs. On the right hand side, just requires an extraordinarily strict set of rules to make sure that every LCA is that is done is done exactly the same way as the one used to generate the cap. And that is just not feasible. Then we had the idea of a benchmark, which I think is quite an attractive system. So we need to identify our our benchmark, perform LCA and and come in below that that benchmark. This is feasible, but in my opinion, needs a fair amount of work to do properly. It is currently used, I think improperly in a in a number of programs because those programs have a self-defined benchmark. Which to me isn't valid because you can set the bar wherever you like. And it doesn't give me any assurance that you've actually achieved a reduction. Okay, let's wrap up. And I'm sorry, Edie, I'm eating into your time. With just a couple of last slides. So policy options that are supportable with current resources, they can be put in place. And you can be fairly confident that the tools were there, that that these can be implemented fairly robustly. Any incentive to encourage the use of LCA on new construction products. Any incentive to encourage manufacturers to do LCA and publish EPDs. And if if anyone would would be brave enough to talk about a tax, you you could implement a carbon fee on on new construction. I recognize that may be technically feasible, but maybe politically unfeasible. Policy options that might need more technical infrastructure, so feasible, but I'm just concerned about reliability of results. To establish some kind of performance targets for new construction. So in other words, a whole building LCA target. And to establish performance targets for manufacturers. So in other words, having product-specific LCA targets. Okay, just quickly mention that I've drawn this content from some publications that we do have available on our website, all available for free as a download, a white paper briefing note and a magazine article that that put a little bit more meat on what I talked about. And here's our website address. So I think I'd better flip it to Edie. So you have a little bit of time left, Edie. Are you ready to go?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much, Jennifer. That was fantastic. And for everyone else, you will be getting the 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 test, the after webinar test after we finish this webinar. So I hope you took lots of good notes. Just joking. I know it's a huge amount. So my name is Edie Sonny Hall. I am a consultant with Three Trees Consulting. And I'm coming here today as the facilitator of the North American Wood Product LCA Coordination Group. This is a group I will talk about a little bit later on. I know a lot of you on this call and I know a lot of you from my from my work in forest carbon accounting and sustainability on the forestry level. So many of you may be a bit surprised that I also have have some experience all the way through the value chain on this side of things. And I also was one of the original members of the Forest Climate Working Group. So I'm really happy to be with this group. I haven't been a participate participant recently, but I am very familiar with all of the work that you do. And I know that this is just an incredible group with so many rich discussions. And I know that this is just an incredible group with so many rich discussions. And also has just an incredible powerful voice. So very happy that you guys have taken the time to to learn a little bit more about embodied carbon and some. Some ways that there might be some policy opportunities. So you guys are coming at this, I'm sort of taking a leap here because everybody has different expertise, but you very much have the expertise on on the forestry side and also recognize the importance of markets. On on that positive feedback onto the forestry side on working and manage forests. And I think you also will say, you know, you have this general understanding that wood takes relatively less energy. To saw up a two by four than some of the alternative materials and there there could possibly be kind of that that climate benefit associated with it. But I think that's where we kind of get a little bit strung up and say, okay, well, what does that mean? How do you actually quantify what are so the the impacts back to the forest? And are there really tools out there and where does the data come from? So Jennifer did a fantastic job, hopefully, in giving you that that one on one overview of what. All this means, how you would actually go about analyzing across the whole value chain and the two different levels that you can be looking at. You can be looking at it on the product level and the whole building level. She was focused mainly on the whole building level. I am going to Jennifer, if you could go on to the next slide here. I'm gonna I'm gonna just focus on kind of three specific things here and hopefully make some tie ins to to what Jennifer talked about. So I'm gonna I'm gonna try to make that distinction between the product LCA. And and EPDs and what exactly those are and who's using them. And make that distinction to what Jennifer was talking about, which was more mainly on the whole building LCA and whole building LCA tools. And then I'm going to talk about specifically in regards to wood products, where that data comes from. I think that is the 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 piece that's of real significance to this group and also where you can help in terms of keeping the funding going. And then I will talk a little bit about the North American Wood Product LCA Coordination Group and what they're focused on in terms of improvements. So next slide, please. Okay, so I just want to go back and sort of reiterate the difference between a product level LCA and a whole building LCA. The stages that Jennifer represented, these A1 through A3. The the B ones, the or sorry, A1 through A5, the B ones, the C ones. These are terminologies that. The jargon in in the LCA world that may not necessarily be familiar to you, but they will come up over and over and over again. And I want to emphasize that. That the the product level LCA, while you can. Go through and and do all the lifecycle stages, so you can do from upstream all the way through end of life. You generally don't, you generally just do a cradle to gate and Jennifer mentioned this before, but the reason why is. There's usually so many different end uses for a product. That it would be difficult to sort of. Tie tie that back, so so generally. Product level LCAs are cradle to gate. Now, an LCA. Is done according to ISO standards and as Jennifer mentioned. It's your choice as to what the the functional unit is, what you are comparing and what scope you are including. What stages you are including in this. And as long as you put those assumptions out. That is a that is a legitimate LCA. And and this is one of the reasons why you have a lot of differences when someone says, oh, I'm going to do an LCA and oh, this LCA result says this and this LCA results says this. They could both be legitimate LCA results, but they have completely different functional units and scope. EPDs are the consumer facing way to report LCA data. They also can be different, but there is an effort to try to make them a little more standardized within a material. And what that means is. The the EPDs within a material category, so so for example, the North American Wood Product Material Category, Building Product Material Category. Are all done according to a specific set of rules called a product category rule. That also in order to set up those rules, you're also following another ISO standard process. So that the EPDs that are associated with a wood will generally have the same unit that they're compares comparing on and the same general. Lifecycle stages that are associated with it. However, a different material will have a completely. Potentially different set of rules that they're doing, but they they are the agreed upon standardized rule. So this is just a little bit. Little bit more of a distinction between the two. Okay, so next slide here. Okay, so who uses the product EPDs? Jennifer mentioned a few of these before and I'm going to kind of go in a little bit more, so. So some green building standards such as LEED and Green Globes and others will will. Give you points simply for using a product that has a published EPD along with that along with that product. And as Jennifer mentioned, you in LEED, you can get even more points if you can show that that product actually is best in class. But at at the beginning piece, it's really just a matter of disclosure, trying to get folks to to be. Looking at these and calculating. There's some initiatives that are also focused on this product level, so. The Embodied Carbon and Construction Calculator is an initiative that has come out of the Carbon Leadership Forum at the University of Washington. And the idea is to get this large database filled with a whole bunch of EPDs that's focused on selecting. Low carbon products after the design phase, so so you've got your building, I think Jennifer mentioned a building that that. Had concrete as one of their their highest impacts and then choosing. The the lowest embodied carbon concrete that you you can have. Now, there's some. There there's some issues with. With with this, it's it's a it's a good step, but it's not necessarily the complete answer for everything. And and I'm going to give a little bit of. A little bit of flavor on this from from the wood product side of things. When the idea, you know, in the ideal world with this EPD, you are sorry, with this databases, you have a whole bunch of EPDs. And they're they're manufacturer specific and even mill specific, so that you're going in, you're saying, oh, I'm going to collect this, you know, two by four that comes from this particular mill. Well, the North American Wood Industries, there are some manufacturer specific EPDs, but most of it is. Industry wide EPDs and and there's there's good reason for this. It has to do with, one, it has to do with how the data gets collected and I will go into that a little more. But there's also a question of whether or not from a climate perspective, it's it's even worth the cost to create manufacturer specific EPDs. So let's take for example, a two by four, so. According to the most recent American Wood Council. EPD for softwood lumber. A two by four has about sixty three kilograms of CO2 equivalent per meter cubed of product. So that's their kind of standard way that they're assessing the product. I I you that may number may not mean much to you, but I will tell you that that's a pretty, that's a relatively small amount. For a product, it's it's something, but it's a relatively small amount, can't concrete, for example, may have five to six times that. And wood is, as we know, wood is a commodity material, so there's. An effort to have efficiency in the supply chain, so. You obviously want to be selecting the grade that you want, maybe even the species you want, but but really delivery, so like transportation. To wherever the construction site is, to wherever the ultimate consumer site can eat up quite a bit of that at greenhouse gas emissions. So if you were to try to choose, you know. A a two by four that had a lower embodied carbon, but but happened to come from someplace that's further away than than something else, you may end up having. More emissions in your transportation. Now, that's probably not the case with some other materials that that have a larger embodied carbon in them and 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 actually really can make some changes. Within. Within that manufacturer stage. But you can also get a little bit lopsided to that other side. So for example, it within this EC3 database. Ready mixed concrete has hundreds, if not thousands of EPDs in this database. And so these are some of these are manufacturer specific DC EPDs and you know, you could it could seem on the surface that you're actually selecting things that that. Really do have an impact in terms of what your embodied carbon is. And I think you can, and I think you do, but maybe not as much as you might like. For the kind of two reasons associated that one is that. You really do need to have a specific strength associated with it, so you can't necessarily compare like to like. I think Jennifer mentioned this before is, you know, a cradle to gate only gets you so far. It does have to do with how the performance of what that product is and the actual building where some of these differences can be made. And then the second one is while these are manufacturer specific. EPDs, the bulk of the 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 bulk of the actual. Emissions associated with a concrete EPD come that comes from the cement making process with itself. And that it can be up to ninety percent, that is actually coming from an industry wide EPD. So there's a there's 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 a great effort associated with these product level. Sort of policies, but but it's not sort of the end all be all. And I think I I think Jennifer was was also sort of alluding to this in some of these. That 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 of the whole building areas is is really where you're going to be having the greatest input in being able to. Incentivize both within material efficiencies, but also within design efficiencies where some of the substitution comes in. And that's really also a a big piece where where wood products can shine in this. Uh, next slide, please. So where does the wood LCA data come from? This is this is really important for you guys. Because this sort of gets at that underlying piece of, you know, how much how much confidence can we have in this data? And I will tell you that that the wood LCI information has actually been collected for quite a while. With wood industry was sort of one of the first adopters of of LCAs, EPDs didn't come into the. The forefront until maybe seven or eight years ago, but but the the actual underlying data has has been collected. For the last twenty years or so. This data is mostly funded through government grants. And carried out by organizations. Quorum, for example, did the bulk of all almost all the original LCAs and still does a number of the LCAs. And they're 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 done. Oh, so academic institutions, Forest Products Lab, LCA practitioners and Athena. They're a whole building LCA organization that they do work a lot with all materials, but they also do product level LCAs. Mainly for some of the Canadian wood products. So these surveys, they obviously rely on primary data at at mills. And in the past, they've been sent out to individual mills represented across regions. And they're compiled at that product level, so the the idea is to try to get representation across regions and production, etc. That most of these products now have have had two inventories done, so one in kind of that early 2000s and and then another one in in. Kind of the 2012 area. And we're we're planning ahead, I'll get to this in a second, we're planning ahead for the for the next round. This data, this underlying data is is published in these LCA reports. And then they also get put into these public lifecycle inventory LCI databases, which then. Hopefully get used by these whole building LCA tools and get populated by the by by these like lifecycle databases. That's the that's the intent as you kind of go forward is to make sure that the actual underlying data itself is up to date and is also publicly available, so that gets used everywhere. That consumer facing report that EPD, those are issued by. The 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 sort of owners of the data, so the associations that sort of have all the the companies in the mills that that manufacture the data. And the most recent round has just been put up for six of the wood product categories. On the American Wood Council website and the Canadian Wood Council website. And the underlying data is. Available on the Quorum website, which I will get to in a second. All right, next slide here. So with all of this. The I I I don't know if you've gathered through all this, hopefully, you're you're not having a sort of panic attack out of how overwhelming the process is, just when you've sort of. Got in your head around the forestry side of things. There's a whole nother level to all of all of the different. Terms and data and etc. But but there is a coordinated, there is a process. You can sort of see that it's very labor intensive and it's costly. And there's more and more interest in using this data. This data is not just used, you know, for for making building decisions, but it's also used in in lots of policy decisions in terms of, you know, what's the what's the best way with forests and forest products can play a role in climate mitigation. All of this is really important and it does rely on this underlying data. And because of this, that it's used in so many different aspects. Of the forest sector, we also know that there's sort of, there's a lot of segmentation in the in the in the forest sector between landowners, policy. Manufacturers, building community, etc. So so there really wasn't kind of one person that said, I'm I'm the owner of this and I'm going to take the lead and sort of figuring out how to coordinate it all. And that's where the US Endowment usually steps in and sort of identifying. Where things where they can kind of fill a gap and the Forest Products Lab, which has really been a convenor and a disseminator of of all of this data. They had the idea to form a coordination group, who are calling it the North American Wood Product LCA Coordination Group. Started about two years ago. And the goal is to coordinate. All the wood LCA academics, the consultants, industry associations, government agencies for kind of two principal purposes. So the first one is to more efficiently collect LCA information and product LCA reports. You know, the EPDs eventually as that as that gets gets going, but the underlying smoothing out that process, making it a lot. A lot more efficient. And then the second one is to better educate consumers initiative standards on what. What LCA is, what what it does, what it doesn't do, how biogenic carbon is is. Is looked at there, all of the all the different pieces of that. So we are, we meet quarterly. We have sort of subgroups as projects go underway and we are definitely making progress. This is where we identified essentially how we can get better. Better participation with mills, better coordination with existing mill surveys. Also, how to sort of smooth out the calendar of LCA reports so that there's not a big backlog and it comes out six at a time, but try to smooth it out every year. This is where we also identified what types of. This is where we also identified what types of stable funding would be important through to this Forest Products Lab that then can give out grants to go, go do all this work as well as other, other questions that need to be answered associated with LCA. And that is the funding request that I think has made it way, its way into the Forest Climate Working Group. So that's super important and thank you for, for doing your part. It also coordinates research and shares the latest research. And we have sort of ideas for how different projects can be done. So if anyone has any ideas, I'm happy to bring it to the group. There's some great researchers there that are happy to, to, to work on some interesting ideas. Next slide, please. So just one final thing. I know that you guys have been completely inundated with information here and there's going to be a lot more questions. One of the things that we did, that did come out of this group was in coordination with, with the Carbon Leadership Forum, really focused on builders and architects that were having some similar questions about, you know, the use of wood, how, what's the, the impact of using wood back into the forest? How biogenic carbon is accounted for in a wood LCA? Sort of all of these questions that folks have. We helped put together a eight-hour seminar that goes into detail in a lot of these. It's on this website right here. There's a lot of information, the actual presentations are there, so are the, the slides. So our top 10 Q and A and a huge long backlog of Q and A. So I recommend maybe starting with the top 10 Q and A. Or if you actually want to know which session you want to look at. In session four, I have a 10-minute summary presentation that can kind of give you the overview of, of what everything is. And I am going to leave it at that. We have about 16 minutes left. We said we were going to have 15 minutes. So we're going to open it up for questions. I think, Michael, are you going to be the one who's, who's moderating this?
I am happy to do that. Questions from the group? And, and realizing that we're, we're running out of time. If you want to email me a question, please do so at michael@usendowment.org and we can get that response to you as well. But any questions for the group right now?